The Monday, December 4th, 2023 regular meeting of the Gardner City Council will come to order. The clerk will please call the roll. Counselor Boone?
Present.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Present.
Counselor Ronna Cormier?
Present.
Counselor General Lawitz?
Present.
Counselor Harder?
Present.
Counselor Heath?
Present.
Counselor LaMach?
Present.
Counselor Tison?
Present.
Counselor Tyros?
Present.
Counselor Walsh?
Present.
And President Kuzinskas?
Present.
Please rise to recite the opening prayer and pay the Pledge of Allegiance.
Almighty God, we thank thee for bringing us together this evening, inspire us, store thee deeds in sound decisions, and direct us toward the attainment of good judgment. We pray thee to bless and protect all people of our city, and to survive and inspire us that we may deliverate in unity and harmony. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Open meeting recordings, any person may make a video or audio recording of any open session of a meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium subject to reasonable requirements of the chair as to the number, placement, and operation of equipment used so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to make such recordings shall notify the chair forward. All documents and exhibits used or referenced at the meeting must be submitted in duplicate to the chair as they become part of the meeting minutes pursuant to general law, Chapter 38, subsection 20. Is anyone here recording tonight's meeting? There are no minutes of prior meetings, there are no public hearings, communications from the mayor, orders, item 11105, an order authorizing $3,085.47 payment of prior year salary expenditure. Report from the Finance Committee, Counselor General Lawitz.
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance Committee just met on this. This is for two staff members who were not given their step increases, and so this is to pay the retroactive amount due to those employees. The Finance Committee was in favor, and I move to pass the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor General Lawitz, seconded by Counselor Ron Cormier to authorize the payment. Is there discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll. Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Darrell Lawitz?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor LaMach?
Yes.
Counselor Tison?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Communications, item 11106, a notification from the mayor regarding certification of FY 2024 tax levy. Counselor Ron Cormier?
You've all received a copy of this from the mayor, and this is one of the first years we've provided with all of this information. It shows you quite detailed the facts and figures that the state uses when they allow us to set the tax rate. It shows us how much there is for new growth. It also indicates how much carryover of excess levy capacity we've had, because we've not always gone up to our total levy capacity. So this is very useful. The mayor is going to provide this information as we go through the new budget year. So I make a motion that we place this on file.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Ron Cormier, seconded by Counselor General Lawitz to place the notification on file. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item 11107, a notification from the mayor regarding FY 2024 tax rate and FY 2024 tax recapitulation. Counselor Ron Cormier?
As you also received this documentation, this is the information that our auditor, Mr. Richard, and our city assessor provide to the state so that they can set our tax rate. As you can see, it's at $14.99. That's the oldest, lowest that it's been since the year 2010. And kudos to both Mr. Richard and Ms. Kumar, because this is about a month earlier than we usually get this information. So it's useful for, I think, homeowners and everyone else to kind of plan on. And so congratulations to them, and I make a motion that we place this on file.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Ron Cormier, seconded by Counselor General Lawitz to place the notification on file. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Walsh?
Yes, it is true that the tax rate set at $14.99 per thousand of valuation is lower than it's been in a long time. The primary reason for that is that valuations of properties are substantially higher, certainly higher, than they've ever been before. And they're inversely related, the two items. So I think when we get the tax bill, we'll be to tell the story.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Boone?
Thank you, Madam President. I concur with Counselor Walsh that definitely the assessed value plays a magical part in determining what we pay. So the tax rate is relative, and I want to remind the last meeting, we were the second highest tax rate in all of North Central Massachusetts, including Lemonster and Fitchburg, who are much bigger than us and provide a lot of services. But it's good to see the tax rate come down. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item 11108, a notification from the mayor regarding insurance change, removal of 30-day grace period following resignation or termination. Counselor Heath?
I'd like to make a motion to put this, well, to place this on, to put this notification on file, sorry.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Heath, seconded by Counselor LaMach to place the notification on file. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Petitions, applications, communications, et cetera. Item 11109, applications for motor vehicle dealers licenses Class 1. A, Salvador Chevrolet 442 West Broadway. B, Salvador Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram 442 West Broadway. Counselor Craig Cormier?
Move to refer to the Safety Committee for study and report.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Paul Tisone to refer the item to the Public Safety Committee. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item 11110, applications for motor vehicle dealers licenses Class 2. A, AC Auto Clinic 411 Packer Street. B, Brian's Auto Sales 549 West Broadway. C, Gardner Auto Mart Incorporated 182 West Street. D, Gardner Motors LLC 119 Pearson Boulevard. E, JPJ Automotive LLC 78 East Broadway. F, Mike's Auto 251 East Broadway. G, Osagi Enterprise LLC 43 Toby Street. H, Rick's Radiator Repair Used Car Sales 800 West Broadway. I, Salvador Chevrolet 421 West Broadway. J, Salvador Chevrolet 249 Tippity Boulevard. K, Rob's Dino Services LLC 268 Coleman Street. L, Jay Wood Incorporated 361 West Street. Counselor Craig Cormier?
Move to refer to the Safety Committee for study and report.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Craig Cormier, seconded by Counselor Tisone to refer to the Public Safety Committee for further study and report. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item 11111, applications for motor vehicle dealers licenses Class 3, Osagi Enterprise LLC Use Auto Parts Sales 43 Toby Street. Counselor Craig Cormier?
Move to refer to the Safety Committee for study and report.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Craig Cormier, seconded by Counselor Harder to refer to the Public Safety Committee for further study and report. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item 11112, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 675 thereof entitled zoning, add sports betting to the zoning table of uses. Counselor Heath?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Both, there's a lot of ones here, so 11112 and 11113. I'd like to go ahead and recommend this to the Planning Board to go ahead and have a joint meeting between us and the City Council and the Planning Board.
So item 11, the motion is for item 11112 and item 11113, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 675 thereof entitled zoning, to amend section 1070 thereof entitled marijuana establishments to change the method to increase the quota allowed by the code of the City of Gardner.
Second the motion.
The motion is to refer to the Planning Board and schedule a joint public hearing between the City Council and the Planning Board, made by Counselor Heath, seconded by Counselor Tyros. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Walsh?
I'm just going to point out, this is the second time we've had these items before us from referred to the Planning Board. The materials that, materials provided to us in the packet were essentially the same as those that were provided to us back in, in the early part of this year when we first had this up for consideration. At that time, it was drawn by the mayor, because it was determined that the mayor was not someone, in the statutory scheme, the mayor was not someone who could initiate a change in the zoning amendment. And we have an opinion from the city solicitor saying that. The city solicitor's opinion also recites, by reference to the statute, the people or the entities that can initiate. And the city council itself clearly is one of those. An individual city councillor, I'm not so sure about. But that, I'm going to vote in favor of this, but I think that's an issue that we need to be resolved at some point. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Reports of standing committees, appointments committee, item 11083, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Deborah Pond to the position of Human Resources Director for term expiring October 31st, 2026. Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. The committee, the mayor, the appointee met on the reappointment. Director Pond has been in this position since 2002. The committee acknowledging the long tenure and service to the city and also thanking her for her service, especially through the challenges of COVID, the COVID pandemic. The committee discussed a number of challenges faced by the department in the past three years, and the concerns were raised regarding the performance of the director in those challenges. The director responded to those concerns. She also had provided a letter to counselors outlining a history of things handled by the department since 2020. A motion to recommend the mayor's appointment failed to pass the committee. I now move to confirm the mayor's appointment.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counselor Tyros, seconded by Counselor Walsh to confirm the mayor's appointment. All those in favor say aye.
Is there discussion?
I'm sorry, is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. I myself was on the side that voted to not recommend the appointment. I believe in acknowledging the long tenure of this appointee. There are issues that need to be addressing and that I would say we need improvement as a city, and that is why I chose to not recommend the mayor's appointment on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor LaMach?
I also did not vote in favor of bringing this appointment forward to the committee. And I guess the best way I can sum it up is a quote I have from the Society of Human Resources Director that says, "Professionals are expected, human resource professionals are expected to exhibit individual leadership as a role model for maintaining, exhibiting the highest standard of ethics." And I just do have concerns about some of the things that go on within the office, and that is why I did not vote in favor of this reappointment. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Heath?
Thank you, Madam President. So, you know, obviously, I'm one of the, I'm the newest councillor here, and so next month comes, however, you know, going around talking to city employees, things of such. The consensus is, is that, you know, whether people want to say it or not, that Deborah Pond runs the city. There, I haven't, personally, I know her, I know her kids and everything else. She's awesome to me. Her kids are awesome to me. But the consensus of the people that I've spoken to, they're not too fond of her. I don't know, I haven't asked what their reasons are, but I just wanted to go ahead and go put it out there.
Madam President, point of order.
Counselor Boone?
If we're talking about personnel, shouldn't we be doing this in executive session or elsewhere?
I don't believe that's the point of, no, I don't think, I think it's appropriate for us to speak on the appointment.
Okay. I'm sure in the past, we haven't talked about person, someone by themselves in open meeting, but that's your decision, Madam President.
I mean, it's not my decision, it's the point of order. I don't, I don't think there's any issue with discussing the appointment. I mean, it's in front of us to confirm the appointment. I don't, if there is personnel matters being discussed, that wouldn't be appropriate, but this is a, her appointment is a personnel matter.
There are opinions being made, too, Madam President.
I'm going to recess the meeting. We'll call the meeting back to order. We are on item 11083. I just want, for clarification purposes, I just want to make sure it's clear that we are voting on whether or not to, and we are discussing whether or not to confirm the appointment in question that is in the item before us, and we're not doing a performance review. It's not a personnel matter. This doesn't actually fall under something that would go under executive session, and so we can move forward with our discussion on the item. Further discussion? Counselor Walsh?
I also served on the Appointments Committee and was the minority vote in favor of her, to confirm her appointment. I've been on the council for the better part of the 21 years that she has served. I've found her to be professional, I've found her to be knowledgeable, I've found her to be effective. I've found her advice to be worthwhile and on point when I served as acting mayor. The position is a difficult one. It's not a popularity contest. It can be very difficult sometimes. I mentioned during the Appointments Committee meeting, when I was serving as acting mayor during the course of the early stages of the pandemic, there were incredibly difficult decisions and process to make about the safety of, the public, safety of city employees. The director was intimately involved in virtually all of those decisions, if not all of them. Made wise decisions, gave wise counsel. Again, you're not going to make a lot of friends being the Human Resources Director, but she made a friend of me, and not just because of any personal matter, but based upon the professionalism of her performance over the course of time that she's served in this capacity. I was at the meeting when the issues that were expressed by the other two committee members were raised. I thought she answered them directly, fully. There's something else that was going on that wasn't raised during the meeting. And it's surprising to me that there would be a vote against this one. And I urge, and it is a very important position, I urge that we not be left without a personnel director, and that personnel director should be Deb Pond. I plan to vote in favor of the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Heath, did you have anything further that you wanted to add? We did a point of order, which I've responded to, but I wanted to be sure you were finished with your discussion point.
Thank you, Madam President. I just, you know, I don't know if I said anything wrong, I guess I did. I just wanted to go ahead and, you know, clear it up, that I apologize if I did anything wrong. That was all. That's my reason.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Counselor Harder?
Yes. I'd like to say, everything Counselor James Walsh has stated is right on point. Deborah Pond is an amazing person in employees, you might say. I hear from the grapevine that she has a really strong personality. Well, don't you need a really strong personality when you're doing that job? I wish my personality was stronger. I have tried for 13 years, well, it'll be my 13th year, and I have tried to be stronger. And it's difficult, but this lady does an excellent job, and I will be supporting her.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ron Cormier?
I too have served with, I was here when she was first elected. One of the advantages that she does have is the experience. I suspect that if we inquire about like positions anywhere else, it is not one that leaves people with a warm, fuzzy feeling. It's a very difficult position. Part of the situation, however, is this is an executive appointment. Ours is to confirm or deny. If there are issues with her job performance, they should have been and/or should be addressed by the Executive Department. We only have three positions as councillors in which we can do that. That's the auditor, the treasurer, and the city clerk. All others, we report to the Executive Department. And that being said, because of her experience, having worked with her, have seen her work over the years, and our need for someone that's strong and dedicated in that position, I would too support her.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Boone?
Thank you, Madam President. I concur. Every time I needed some help or answers from Director Pond, she was always forthcoming, always responsive when I was on the school committee or on the city council. Always gave me the answers that, well, not the answers I was looking for, but gave me the information I was looking for. And she's been toeing the road, as you saw in the letters, all the work that she has to go through and the dedication that she has given to the city. And she's on these other, two other commissions that she has to deal with, especially the Greenwood Pool. I apologize, I don't mean especially, because everything she does for the city is, but that's just another thing that she does. And we all received a letter, she's given up vacation time, she's worked hard for the city, she's dedicated to the city, so I fully support her nomination. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Boone. Further discussion? Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President, for the second time on the matter. As Chair of the Appointments Committee, I think it's important for us to remember that, as Counselor Ronald Cormier stated, this is an executive appointment. We do have a role as the City Council to confirm that appointment. The mayor points based on skill, education, or experience that he believes, and with updated language, he or she will be able to perform the duties of the role. It's our role as the council to evaluate that confirmation and make our own assessments and to vote to confirm them or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion?
Roll call, please.
We'll do a roll call vote on the item. If there's no further discussion, the clerk will please call the roll. Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor General Lawitz?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor LaMach?
No.
Counselor Tison?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
No.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes.
Nine yeas, two noes, motion passes. Item 1108.
Counsel, Counselor President, the appointee is here if we choose to swear. Your call, Madam President, I just wanted to point out.
Thank you. I'm going to finish with the Appointments Committee, and then we really can do the swearing.
Understood.
Thank you. Item 11084, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of David Hackett to the position of Disability Commission Member for term expiring October 30th, 2026. Counselor Tyros?
Thank you very much, Madam President. The committee met on this reappointment. Mr. Hackett, as a part of the Disability Commission's mandate, they have members on the committee that they themselves experience a disability to bring their perspective to the committee. Mr. Hackett has a mobility disability. We look forward to hearing what he has to say about and what things he can bring to the commission. The Disability Commission has not met since January of 2020 due to the pandemic being especially problematic for that committee to meet. But the mayor has worked towards getting the committee to, back to a quorum through appointments, and the committee favorably and unanimously recommended the mayor's appointment. Therefore, I move the appointment be confirmed.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counselor Tyros, seconded by Counselor Walsh. To confirm the mayor's appointment, is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item 11085, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Deborah Pond to the position of Disability Commission Member for term expiring October 30th, 2026. Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. This is a reappointment. The committee met with the mayor and Director Pond on the reappointment. Director Pond reported that this appointment is part of her job as the personnel director. She looks forward to reconvening the committee and bringing new members up to speed and tackling some problems that the committee has, will have in front of them. The committee voted unanimously to recommend, therefore, I move the mayor's appointment.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counselor Tyros, seconded by Counselor Walsh to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. At this time, we will take a brief recess of the meeting to swear in the appointee present here this evening. We will reconvene after the swearing is completed to call the meeting back to order at that time. Safety Committee, item 11086, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 600, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Section 24, entitled Parking Prohibited on Certain Streets. Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. The Traffic Commission met last week, and the deputy chief has agreed that they will do a 60-day trial of this ordinance on Comey Street, and we will also look to schedule a public hearing towards the end of that so we can get any feedback that comes of it before we push to vote on this. So if it, please counsel, ask for more time.
If there is no objection, the committee will be granted more time. Counselor Walsh?
I have no objection, but I would just ask, since I will not be on the council when this matter comes up after a public hearing, that the clerk might give me notice of it, because it is an interest of mine, it is an interest of mine as the current ward councillor, one that I support, and hopefully will get final passage. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. If there's no objection, the committee will be granted more time. The committee will be granted more time. Unfinished business and matters for reconsideration, item 11061, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner by adding a new chapter to be entitled, Chapter 504, Wage Theft Protection, which shall provide for protection for workers and employees of contractors working on city projects. Counselor General Lawitz?
Thank you, Madam President. I move to send the ordinance to second and final printing.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor General Lawitz, seconded by Counselor Tyros to send the ordinance to second and final printing. Is there discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll. Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor General Lawitz?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor LaMach?
Yes.
Counselor Tison?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Executive session, to approve the executive session meeting minutes of August 7th, 2023, and September 18th, Executive session, to approve the executive session meeting minutes of August 7th, 2023, and September 18th, 2023. I will entertain a motion to move into executive session under the purviews of the open meeting law solely for the purpose to approve the executive, executive session meeting minutes of August 7th, 2023, and September 18th, 2023. The city council will reconvene in open session at the conclusion of the executive session for the remainder of the meeting. Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion made by Counselor Tisoni, seconded by Counselor Boone, to move, to enter into executive discussion, is, just, executive session, is there any discussion on the motion? If none, the clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor General Outt?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Tison?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kaczynski?
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. As required by Chapter 38 of the general laws, I declare that discussing these matters in open session would not be appropriate as the discussion involves items related to privileged information from the August 7th, 2023, and September 18th, 2023, executive sessions. The council will now meet in executive session. A brief recess will be called as the members of the public exit the council chamber. The doors will be shut and the public broadcast of the meeting will pause. Following the city council voting to close executive session, re-enter into open session, the doors will be reopened and the public admitted back into the chamber and the public broadcast resumed. We will now recess while people leave the chamber.